I'd like to call this meeting the Westland City Council order will begin tonight with the pledge of allegiance led by your very own councilman Mike McDermott.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rolto.
Councilman Gabow.
Present.
Councilwoman Green.
Present.
Councilman Hersberg.
Present.
Councilman Landau.
Present.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
President Hart.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you for a quick announcement on behalf of the council. Thank you for observing our social distancing or just remember to keep your chairs six feet apart and wear masks when appropriate. So, thank you. At this time, we'll go ahead and open up questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow a person to be recognized only beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda at the meeting. Questions asked will be answered during the agenda item following a motion and support from the council. Are there any questions from the public on the agenda? Are there any questions from the public on the agenda? All right, seeing none, move on to the consent calendar. Zero motion. Motion by Councilman Landau.
Support.
Support by Councilman Gabow. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Any other discussion from the council? Councilman Hersberg.
Sure, just a quick comment on item E. We're getting two German Shepherd canine units for our police department. Just wanted to express some words of support for those. They're an important asset for our police and we've gone in quite a while without them. So glad to see they're coming back. Thanks a lot, Chief.
Councilwoman Green, discussion on the consent calendar.
Yes, I'm aware. Thank you. My comment is relative to item H. I wanted to take a moment to recognize and appreciate our clerk, Richard LeBlanc, on securing almost $225,000 in grant funding for our upcoming election. As you all know, this is, this election actually has, we have a record number of absentee voters. You know, we're in the middle of a pandemic. You know municipalities have been hit from a budgetary standpoint and we also have some employment changes in our clerks department. So they have a whole lot going on and to write multiple grants to secure almost, again, almost $225,000 for, to ensure that our election goes off without a hitch in November is very much appreciated and should be recognized. So thank you very much for that work, Clerk LeBlanc.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items: approval of minutes of the regular meeting held September 21, 2020; traffic control order 2020-02, install one handicap parking sign in front of 5970 North Berry; approval of bid for pavement marking services; administration recommended the low bidder, JV Contracting Incorporated, on an as needed basis; approval of bid for senior center HVAC pathogen mitigation project; administration recommended the low bidder, Climate Technology Mechanical LLC, in the amount not to exceed $72,174; approval of purchase of two German Shepherd dogs, essential equipment, training, and certifications for the police department; approval of Norway's street lighting enhancement project with DTE, amount $27,642; adoption of ordinance 248A100, an ordinance to amend the Westland City Code by amending Section 110-2.1 to establish a temporary moratorium on applications for land use approvals, permits, or licenses to establish new automobile gasoline stations. This item had been introduced September 21, 2020. Final item is approved on the consent calendar, acknowledgement of receipt of grant funding for election-related expenditures, total amount $224,888.70. Moving to new business, item one, adoption of prepared resolution approving the city's comprehensive financial plan and authorizing notice of intent.
Motion by Councilman Gabow.
Support.
Support by Councilman McDermott. Is there a discussion from the maker?
No.
Any, Councilman McDermott? Oh, okay, very good. Any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item two, approval of vouchers.
Motion by Councilman Landau.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Rakowski. Is there any discussion from the maker?
No.
Any from the supporter? Councilwoman Rakowski, any discussion? Nope. Any other discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously. Wow, that was quick. All right, moving on to comments or requests from the public. So let me scroll back up. Everyone speaking before the council should do in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly conduct of the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker, will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it has started. Is there anyone on my left? Is there anyone on my right? Right.
I have to pull this thing off for a second. Well, I can't believe finally, person to person here, getting on that Zoom is not easy to use. I had a hard time getting on there and I finally got on there. I wanted to say thank you, Peter, for your help. Once I got on there, I got a chance to make that phone call, to call in. But it's much better. I prefer to do this any day than sitting on a computer. And because our, the way things are looking now nowadays, we are at home doing a lot of internet stuff, not face to face. I want to start seeing face to face again. It's really good. And anyway, I got a chance of focusing on, I want to recognize, you know, since March, I've been kind of driving around and mobbing in my car too and being safe out there and seeing the police, you know, on the road. I want to thank them and the fire department, your frontier work, the mayor's office, the council. You know, I've seen where the frontiers are, that's important. Sometimes we need to recognize people who are out there doing that type of work and putting their lives on the line. That's the police department. And they are doing a great job out there because I've been out there pretty much 80% of my time. I'm in Westland. I shop there. I eat in Westland. And I even shop at the thrift store over there at America. Thrift stores, a great store to shop. It's always good, good, good quality clothes and everything. It's a secondhand store and I love it. So, anyway, I want to talk about, again, mental health. You know, I know that's the biggest, during these crisis days, we need to recognize that because sometimes people need someone to reach out there and talk to somebody. So what I've been doing on the road as an ambassador, I have a book. I have all types of resources in here. I left it at the mayor's office, the police department, fire department, and it's a good resource. This is great, this is great information because you don't know what a person might be going through. There's like crisis lines, there's things that people can go get support and get help. I'd be more than happy to leave one with you, Richard, in your office because sometimes you might have people come in your office there.
Thank you.
That might be looking for, for support. So it's very important. I just kind of want, want to share that tonight. So, and also, my biggest thing is, is everywhere I go, and I like to see is, is respect. Respect to me is very important because everywhere we go don't matter, in the community, in shopping, in the restaurants, whatever. We need to be kind to one another. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone on my left? Sir.
Well, good evening. My name is Timothy Gilbert. I live at 34435 Nancy Street here in the city of Westland. Just wanted to stop by and let you know I look forward to serving the city on the school board after this coming election. Hope you have a good evening. Thank you.
So as a reminder, we ask people to try not to campaign from the podium. So I know it's hard sometimes. Fight that urge. Is there anybody else on my right? Yep.
My name is Emily Baumann, and again, it is great to see you guys in person like this. And among other things that I'm doing, I actually did also request to be part of the Ethics Commission, among some other commissions that I actually suggested that it was open to. And so I actually do have a question, and that is that I got the email back that said, "Thank you for applying for this." And I'm glad that it was brought up, but I'm glad we had a study session today on the Ethics Board and things like that. So what is the next step in the process to actually move forward with that? I think that for me, that's my question. It's like, what should I expect? What should I be planning to do? What, really, what is the next step in the process? And if there's anything I can do to help with moving that process forward, I would really appreciate doing that. As a coach also, and a business coach, I actually work with a lot of people, helping them move their own processes forward. So that would be something I'd be interested. So that would be my main question. And again, thank you and good seeing everybody.
All right. Is there anyone else on my left? Please.
I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I, this whole thing with the ethics, the ethics issue that we're not having a commission, people are sending information. I send information and sometimes don't get a response, but I think as community members, we have to hold our elected officials accountable. At one point, I wanted information from a certain elected official, and I didn't get it. But through my schools, working with elected officials and legislators, I got the information. I filed a FOIA request. So my job as an advocate is to help people just ways to hold their elected officials accountable. And I think that everything that we do from this side, this side of building is different policies and it affects people differently. So in my line of work, I feel that we have to really teach other people how to advocate with their elected officials, let them know what they need. I feel that the Ethics Committee really should be looked at. I don't know if somebody can do something, but I just feel that, you know, the ethics is not a part of someone's decision. The ethics is for the whole community. I wasn't going to speak, but see the ethics thing. I'm really passionate about policy, so I just wanted to say I hope they can help.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right? Sir.
Hello, Pastor Edward here, Edward Pruitt from With the Better Westland. I'm actually up here today to speak on the occurrences that have happened in the entirety of Michigan because it affects Westland as well. We do know that the governor's orders have been ceased. So, community members are in their homes wondering what's happening now. We did get an alert today over the news that the Michigan State Health Department has issued a mask mandate and a few other things. Governor Whitmer also mentioned that people who are on unemployment may be in jeopardy without the court clarifying. We have a duty, and you all as well, to give clarification to the citizens so that they are comforted. So I'm asking as we leave here today that you all take some time to comfort the citizens, show them that you are looking into the resources because we may not have the answer today. We understand that. But let's comfort the citizens today. Thank you.
Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Representative Coleman, I didn't catch you at first. Did you want, I'll move things around for you so you can address the city.
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, City Council. It's, thank you, Mayor. It's good to see everybody in person. It kind of makes things feel a little more normal. And to see all your faces in person is really nice rather than just on the screen. So, very good to be here. I know I said that I probably wouldn't come back or talk until after November. I did throw out some numbers when I was speaking about the budget when I called in at the last meeting. But I had some really good news because actually one of the numbers I threw out there, it was three and a half million dollars in new funding for our schools, Wayne Westland Schools. That number is actually, it grew since then. Within a couple of days of your last council meeting, we did approve the budget. And between the last two budgets, the last fiscal year and this upcoming one, it's going to be four million dollars in new funding for our Wayne Westland Schools. So to me, it's a huge deal. I thought it would be good news to share at your, at your first meeting back here. And I just wanted to really take the moment to, to share that with you. I know you guys are all working hard, so I won't take up too much more of your time. But I'll just let you know that our office is, we are planning to go back up to Lansing again soon here to have session. We weren't planning on doing it until after the November general election, but we will be going back up now with the Supreme Court invalidating a lot of the executive orders that the governor was issuing. They were found to be unconstitutional. That's our system. That's the checks and balances. That's the way things work. So we all have to work within our, our system of government. But we will be getting back up there and making sure that people get their unemployment, making sure that the state can continue to function and operate smoothly. If you need any help with anything, feel free to give me a call. Our office line is 517-373-2576. Email kevincoleman@house.mi.gov. And of course, I always give out my cell phone, so feel free to give me a call. Anybody at home who's watching the meeting, always happy to talk, always happy to call back. 734-751-6321. 734-751-6321. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Representative Coleman. Sorry I missed you during announcements and presentations. So, back to citizens' comments. Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Close citizens' comments and move to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you, City Council. Thank you for, those of you that are in the audience tonight, we appreciate you coming out. And we certainly appreciate Westland's facilities director, Vic Barra, working with Devin Adams, the city procurement director, to try to make the city hall as safe as possible and to put in these partitions between city council members. And a lot of time and work went into it, so we appreciate that. Just a couple quick comments tonight, then I was going to answer Ms. Bowman's question on what happens next after you apply to the commissions. And then I've been asked by the city council president to talk a little bit about recycling and, and some of the contamination concerns that we're looking at. So first of all, just real quick through the talking points here, this Thursday is the last day for the Westland Farmers Market. It's hard to believe that we're at the end of summer, but anybody that's been there, I think we really have to thank the Westland Chamber of Commerce because even through a very difficult summer, they put together a pretty darn good farmers market. So I think that they should be applauded for that. City Council, we sent you communication last week that the mall has informed us that they will not be hosting the annual Westland Halloween event this year. So Parkside Credit Union also has, has canceled their, their participation in that this year. So at this, at this point, we're not going to have a citywide Halloween event here at City Hall. So we will be working for that for next year. Although we will be having a Halloween decorating contest. And it runs until November 1st. You can go to the city's website to nominate yourself, friend, a business, or anyone that you think should be recognized. The categories are best autumn display, best spooky display, and most over the top display. Council, we were informed that the Westland Library Board has named interim director, is named their new interim director, and that's going to be Ms. Jennifer Roth. So you probably remember Jennifer. She's been working at the, the library for a while. So I've got a meeting coming up with her, so I'll ask her to, when the time is right, that she can come to the city council, introduce herself and kind of talk about other plans during her internship. Just a reminder that Monday, October 12th is Columbus Day and city offices and the 18th District Court will be closed in observance of the federal holiday, but this will not affect trash, compost, and recycling. Ms. Bowman, who had asked, she said that she had applied for several boards and commissions, and I do see those, and I did see your submissions. So what we're doing right now is we're, we put an ad in the paper, and you probably saw that, if not, some of our city council members have passed that. And we put a list of all the boards that have current openings, and we really generated a lot of interest. So what we do next is, and we're still, we're still taking those in, the city's HR director, Stephanie Field, and my executive director, my executive secretary, Shannon Akron, have been going through those and we're trying to put them in some sort of order. What we do is first of all, per the, the policy is that if you apply to a border commission, you cannot have any open balances with the city. That means you can't be, have an open tax bill, open water bills, or any other type of open, maybe ordinance-related fines against you. So we do ask you that, first of all, if you apply and you do have one of those, you're going to get a nice letter back from us politely asking you to, to take care of those balances and then reapply. So that'll be, that's the first step. And then the next step is what we're doing is part of our increased commitment to diversity is that we've gone through each and every one of our boards and commissions, and we're actually going to kind of steal an idea that the police chief just put on his website. And we're going to create a dashboard for our boards and commissions. And we're taking a look at all the members that are currently on the boards, and we're kind of looking at, we're looking at gender, ethnicity, age, and geographic location that they live in the city. And we're not discriminating against anybody for any of those reasons. I saw the attorney get nervous when I said age. But what we're going to do is we're going to try to make sure that we have a good reflection of all members of the community on these boards. So as we start to appoint members to the boards, if we have maybe a board that has all males on it, we'll certainly be looking to augment that with some females. And we'll also take a look at those other areas as well too. So that's the process that we're going through right now. I've made a commitment to the Westland City Council to name a diversity equity and inclusion board by November 1st. And that, that'll be our first priority is to do that. And then earlier today, we had a study session that talked about the seating of the Ethics Commission. And my goal is to have that seated by the end of the calendar year. But in the meantime, I think what you'll see is between now and the end of the year is that we'll just slowly start to fill those boards. And actually, once you get beyond the, the new boards, the DEI Board, the Ethics Board, and maybe our Beautification Board, which is a newer board, once you get past those, there's not a real, there's not a lot of openings. So, but we're definitely going to, we'll get back with you. And it sounds like you've already got something back from us that said we received your application. So thank you for that. My last comments tonight are, the city council president had, had taken some questions from, from some residents about the recycling program. I know that we've, we've been talking about that. Here's kind of where we're at, or as Vice President Biden likes to say, here's the deal. So the early results of, on participation have been very favorable. People are recycling. The tonnage is quickly returning. However, the new required methods of recycling are not necessarily being adhered to by all of our residents. And the results have produced some contaminated loads, which unfortunately increases the city's cost. And I'm going to talk a little bit about how that does it per the contract. So I think it's easy to say is that, well, the city didn't educate us on, on what we're supposed to do and how and why. And so we'll, we'll take some blame for that. But at the end of the day, to this point, the city has mailed, we've used direct mail to every house that gets curbside recycling information and how, on, on what the new recycling rules are and how to do it. We've used all the city's social media sites. We've used the website, the cable station, newsletters. The West, the, the members of the city council have done a really good job of trying to help us get the word out. Republic Services is who the city contracted with to process our recycling material. They have a website, and it's called simplifiedrecycling.com, and we've been advertising that too. One little twist on that is that's their national website, and there's individual recycling programs in cities all across America. So there are little nuances to the national program as opposed to our local program. And I think that has caused a little bit of confusion. So with that said, I plan to work with the city council to, to double our outreach efforts and the new recycling rules. Every home that's part of the curbside recycling program will very soon receive at your doorstep a packet with several means of education on how the program works. I talked a little bit about it at the last meeting. I'm going to probably have something on the next council agenda that would be the budget to pay for this. But we're going to basically have information on the correct way to curbside recycle and the acceptable items and the non-acceptable items. There'll also be another card that talks about the curbside or the, the recycling drop-off center at, at the DPS yard and the things that we take and the things that we don't take. With that said, we know that at, at the curb, we do not take glass. Steve Smith, who had to step out tonight, has been working with a local vendor that's going to place a container at the recycling, at the drop-off recycling site. And it looks like we will be able to take glass at the recycling site. So I'll have information on that available soon. And it looks like as long as we put the right kind of glass in there that there will not be a cost to the city, which is, which is pretty cool. So with that said, the issue was, let's talk about the contamination. So according to the contract, a load is considered unacceptable when there is 15% of unacceptable items in the load. Now, this could be anything from construction materials, garden hoses, plastic bags, yard waste, or just dirty recycling, you know, greasy pizza boxes, or whatever else that they say contaminates the load. Per the contract, the city has charged a surcharge of $75 per ton that is deemed unacceptable. The remaining part of the load will still be recycled. Why? The unacceptable portion will be taken to a landfill. So if we have a load and it's got some stuff in it that's not recyclable, but it didn't contaminate the rest of the load, they will separate it. They were only charged for the portion that's contaminated. So one of the things that, that I've asked Steve to do, and the city council hasn't heard this yet, but they're going to be invited, is I asked the, the recycling center to basically let us come in when our trucks are coming in and dump the materials on the ground right in front of us. And let's just take a look and see exactly what's in there. I'm going to invite the city council to come with me too. And we'll take a look and see what the materials are. And we're going to ask WLD to come along too and videotape it. So we can, as we educate people, we can say, "These are the rules, but this is what we're getting." So people can see exactly what they're putting in there that, that's causing these contaminated loads. So it's going to be going to be an ongoing thing. As a community, we're just going to have to decide, do we want to be clean recyclers and get the best rate, or are we just going to be, you know, not so clean recyclers? And it's going to cost the city a lot more money. So at the end of the day, it's really, really tough, because when the trucks come out to get your recycling, and the containers down, they cannot see what is inside your blue container. So, you know, they're going to lift it up and dump it in there, and if you put in things like garden hoses, or bowling balls, or anything else, it's gonna, it's not what the program's meant for. So it's going to be a, something that we'll have to work on. We've done it before. Our city recycled very well in the past, and I know that we can do it again. City council, it's not going to be one flyer, one WLND added. I mean, it's going to be all of us working together to try to educate people, and then ask people to kind of self-police it. So I'll share information with you soon on what this packet's going to look like and the cost, and I'll also share information on perhaps doing a tour of the recycling center, so that we can actually see it firsthand. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anything from the attorney's office today?
Nothing.
Thank you. We'll move on to the comments from the city council. We'll start today with Councilman Hirsberg.
Thank you, Council President. I'll start by teeing off those recycling updates. Those are pretty good updates. Glad to hear it. Now that we have that info, I know Council President Hart and myself had mentioned in the past about maybe looking at doing an ordinance to make sure that people are recycling properly, and to see what we could do. I think now that we have the info, maybe it's time to sit down and see if that's something that would fit. Just a couple notes from tonight's meeting. I'll welcome Jennifer Roth as the new interim library director. I know she knows the library well, so we, I'm sure she'll do a good job, and good luck. Tonight on our agenda, we had a Norwaine streetlighting item, and that's mainly going to do replacements, but there's going to be a couple new streetlights over there. And I know we've talked about some of the pedestrian issues in the area, so hopefully that's going to help out. Ray mentioned about your book for resources at Citizens Comments. I'd like to have a copy of that book if you, if you have an extra one. I'd appreciate it. And then it was also mentioned about the boards and the commissions. If you know anybody, you know, reach out to everybody in the family, no matter the age. We're trying to keep people engaged. We've had a hard time filling those boards and commissions for a few years. So hopefully, once we get all these filled, they'll stay filled for some time to come. That's about it. Well, the Westland Historic Village Park Committee, they held a fall sale at the old schoolhouse at Warren and Mearman. It's actually at Warren and Collin Road. I mean, it turned out to be a huge event, probably the biggest event we've had in the city all year. I know a lot of people missed it. A lot of people that weren't able to become a vendor. The event went so well, they scheduled one for next year already, and might be scheduling another one. So I previously mentioned that we got ahold of that land over there at the last council meeting, and I had talked to a couple of council members about doing a dog park. Yeah, I'm going to take that back, based on what the Historic Village Park did over there. There's a lot more opportunity for events like that. So just to clarify, I see a couple people nodding their heads. Hush Haunted House, which is at the old Skateland, is now open. So if you're curious what Skateland looks like now inside, you're going to be pretty surprised. They put on one heck of a show. A lot of local carpenters and craftsmen of all kinds really put together, it's almost like they're doing a Hollywood movie in there. I can't believe some of the work they do. Also, you know, it is October. Eloise is doing tours again. They're doing historical tours during the day, and they're also doing night tours. So if anybody's interested in that. Yeah, that's about it. It was a short agenda. Glad to be back. Thank you.
Councilwoman Green.
Thank you. Would like to start by just offering a general reminder. We will have a major election coming up in the next few weeks due to what has been all over the news about the potential for mail delays with the record number of absentee ballots. Please, if you have an absentee ballot and you're able to bring them to the clerk's office personally to drop them off, to ensure that it arrives, that would actually be a great idea. If you are not, and you're planning to mail them, please mail them as soon as possible to avoid what may be a rush of last-minute ballots that the government has, you know, on any given day, it goes from, they will be, they will arrive on time, or they possibly won't. So please keep that in mind, and try and get them in as quickly as possible. Another general reminder, with the transition taking place, at least in the state of Michigan, please remember to wear your masks. Those of you watching at home, we're not wearing our masks on the DS, but we actually have Plexiglas right on the sides of all of us, and I'm not sure if you can see that. So we are pretty protected. So please take every precaution you can to safely social distance, and also wear your masks when you are out in public for not only your safety, but also for the safety of those around you. I wanted to quickly just go through the chair to Representative Coleman. You stated that Wayne Westland Schools will be receiving $4 million. Is there an approximate timeframe that the school district can expect to receive those funds?
It's in our state budget, so that's between last year's budget for the fiscal year and then this year. So the schools will get their funding as they always do.
Oh, just, just an extra $4 million disbursement? Okay.
Right, right. At the last meeting, I said three and a half million. I just wanted to come and let you know if it bumped up a little more.
Okay, awesome. Just wanted to share the good news and give a little bit more of a timeline for parents who probably, really excited parents and teachers. So the money should be coming soon. And then lastly, again, if I can assist any Westland resident with any issues, any questions, I've had residents calling me who have recently had surgery, and they just want somebody to talk to. I love talking to residents. So you, if there's anything that I can help with, or, you know, information I can provide, you can find me on Facebook. Councilwoman Tasha Green is my Facebook page. Or, as I have done since election three years ago, you can also call me on my cell phone directly at area code 734-828-7010. Again, 734-828-7010. Be safe out there, and we will see you in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Godbout.
Thanks. First, I'd like to start off and congratulate Mayor Wilde on becoming the new president of the Michigan Municipal League. That occurred at the Michigan Municipal League Conference, which was this, just held this last week. And it was the league's first-ever virtual convention. There were great presentations from Governor Whitmer, the Secretary of State, Jocelyn Benson, Fay Nelson of the Kellogg Foundation, and National League of Cities Director Clarence Anthony. There was also a legislative panel led by Congressman Dan Kilde, discussing effective bipartisan efforts at the federal level, which was a great discussion amongst some of our federal legislative officials. And there was also an MML-led discussion of state and federal legislative issues that can affect local municipalities. So as we get copies of the presentations, I'll make sure to forward them on to all my colleagues. And then SEMCOG is working to improve traffic safety through education. Bike, walk, drive. They're going to be sending out important messages as part of this fall education blitz, beginning today and continuing through October 11th. And the first one is a reminder to wait for people to cross the street before you turn. 50% of bicycle and pedestrian accidents occur at intersections. So be aware of people waiting to cross the street before you pull out and try to make your turn at the corner. And that's all I have. It's great to see everybody in person. It's nice to be back and conducting business as in the, in a normal fashion versus via Zoom. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rakowski.
Good evening, everybody. I echo the sentiments here. It's great to be in front of everyone, although it's a little fishbowl feeling, but I like it. I need it for my kids' school. I'm really happy to see that our seniors, our Friendship Center, are going to get the ventilation upgrades that are going to keep them safe. That's important. I'm also happy to see that we're going to have some additional lighting over by our Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center. It tends to get really dark at night over there. So that, some added lighting is definitely going to be beneficial. I'm looking forward to meeting the new canines. And I think a lot of us are. They kind of, they do great things for our city and fight crime, but they're also kind of like our ad hoc mascots, too. So I'm looking forward to that. And some other tiny little people, I think, are looking forward to that. And in fact, I got a special report from some of our tiniest citizens that they are really, really excited about Hubbard Park. I think they might have already started enjoying the new playground equipment, and they said it's awesome. So they said, thank you. And I said, really, that's, you don't have to thank us. That's what your community should have. Parks for our kids, for they stay active. So that's fantastic. I'm happy they're going to be out there having fun. To echo Councilwoman Godbout, congratulations, Mayor, on becoming the president of the MML. It's a great appointment. I know you've been active, and I know you'll do wonderful things for the Municipal League. And I forgot to thank the facilities team for this. I'm sorry. I'm really, I love it. My son's going back to school with 23 kids, and this would be fantastic for the school. So I'm, I'm, can I Pinterest this? I don't know. And then finally, I want to wish Ishwar all the best as he moves on from the library, and welcome Jennifer Roth to her temporary appointment. Libraries are important. Literacy is key, and I look forward to seeing what she's going to bring to the position. Thank you, everyone. Stay safe. If you are mask-wear, continue wearing your masks. And vote, and vote early. Vote once. Flip your ballot. And we should all be very proud of the grants that our city clerk was able to secure for our city. I know, I am just impressed. So thanks, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Councilwoman McDermott.
Well, good evening. Some things never change, including putting the big talkers last here. So it is, in all seriousness, very nice to be socially distanced and safely back here for an in-person council meeting. So it's nice to see all of you and get to see you in person and talk to you a little bit afterwards. I, too, would like to echo my colleague's sentiments for our clerk. So congratulations, and thank you for getting us the grant funding secured for this election. This is probably going to be one of the busiest and most participated in elections in modern history. So to have our clerk secure that funding, I think, is really important. I, too, want to encourage and remind everyone not only to vote, but vote the entire ballot. If you vote straight ticket, regardless of what party you vote for, that does not vote for the nonpartisan section on your ballot. And there are a lot of important races, such as judicial and the state Supreme Court race, as well as our school board races here locally, that are worth voting on, and that you absolutely want to make your voice heard on. There are also a number of ballot proposals and millages here with the Wayne Risa that are worth voting on as well. So make sure, not only if you plan to vote straight ticket, that you flip your ballot over, as my colleague said, and vote for the nonpartisan section of the ballot for school board, for judicial, and for the ballot proposals and millages as well. I would like to welcome Jennifer Roth as our new interim library director. I know that, you know, a number of us know her from working at the library for a number of years, so I think she'll do phenomenally well and represent the city and the library in a great capacity there as our new interim library director. I'd like to thank the mayor on three different accounts tonight. So first off, congratulations on your appointment to being the new board president for MML. I think you'll be a fantastic representative for the city, not only because, you know, we're biased to have you as our mayor, but also because you've been involved in MML for many number of years. So congratulations on that. And then thank you on two different accounts. One, for the study session tonight, reviewing our ethics ordinance, and also our Board of Ethics. I know a number of my colleagues, we've been pretty unanimous in wanting to reseat that Board of Ethics, so we're really glad to, you know, get the ball rolling on that here as well. So thank you for that. And then thank you on the recycling initiative as well. We look forward to being able to better educate our residents here in the city of Westland for what can and can't go in the recycle bins. So thankful for that as well. And then thank you to our state representative, Kevin Coleman, for sharing an update in regards to the school funding, and being able to secure some additional funding from last meeting to this meeting to go into the state budget. I know that we've had, not only here as a municipality, but also in the school district, a lot of financial uncertainties where COVID would take us for the next fiscal year. So it's nice to know that we have some stability coming from Lansing, not only here with revenue sharing in the city of Westland, but also in the school district. So thank you to our representative for that update, and for securing that additional funding as well. And then I think that is mostly it for me tonight. Again, I want to encourage everybody to go out and to vote. And, you know, as my colleague said, there's a lot of uncertainty with how people are voting this year, and when your absentee ballot must be mailed by. You know, it is better safe than sorry to drop it off, as my colleague said, here at the clerk's office. We have a drop box in front here of City Hall that you can easily drop your ballot off at any time. It's safe. It's secure to use that ballot drop box. So if you're coming by, if you work odd hours and City Hall isn't open, you can still drop your absentee ballot off at the clerk's drop box here, located in front of City Hall. And so with that, again, it is good to be in person again, and it's good to be rambling on for 10 minutes here as in an in-person meeting. So thank you, and I'll have a wonderful evening, and please go out and vote.
Thank you, Councilwoman McDermott. Now, it's for everyone's favorite game, Which Mic Talks Longest. For those who've been keeping record, for the first one, let's see how the second one does. Council President Protev, Michael Londo, you're up.
Thank you, Council President Hart. Should be briefed tonight. It's good to be back in person. It's good to see everybody's face and feel the energy in the room, regardless if we have our penalty boxes here. I just want to take a minute to thank our council president, who I thought did an exceptional job running the virtual meetings that we had. Wasn't always easy, but I thought you did the best you can and ran an efficient meeting. With that, also, thank to the IT department and the cable department that had a huge say in having our virtual meetings. Anybody that watches any other virtual meetings, it was, I don't want to say it, but not as well-run as ours. So good job to our administration and to our council president, running our good meetings. And then also, thank you to our DPS crew, and Vic Barrett, our facilities director, Devon Adams as well, for setting up City Hall to make sure everyone's safe here as well. Congratulations to Mayor Wilde on his election to serve as the Michigan Municipal League's 2020-21 Board President. Think you'll do a great job. Like everybody said, you've been very involved with the MML. You served as vice president last year. So looking forward to hearing some great ideas and some, some good things coming from MML. Also, thank you to Councilman Godbout for serving as our representative at the MML conference this week as well. Regarding a few agenda items, they were all consent calendar items. Great job. Nice to see the canines coming back. So I'll be looking forward to meeting them as well. And good luck to Officer Trossper and Officer Teschendorf, who will be our canine handlers. It was touched on about the much-needed street lighting enhancements in Norwaine. Those are going to be great. If you drive down Dorsey Road at night, it's really dark down there. So these Norwaine enhancements, street lighting enhancements, are going to do a great job down there. Also, congratulations and thank you to the clerk's office for all of the grant funding that were requested and received during the past three months. The total amount, I don't know if this was mentioned tonight, that they received was $216,288.70. So great job to the clerk's office for getting all these grants, grant funding to help us with our 2020 elections.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Rakowski and I have spoken a lot about having strategic planning sessions in regards to our future, the future of our city and our fiscal future of our city. We've been talking with the council leadership, and the mayor's office have been talking about a timeline on that. Some more to come on that, but we're looking to do possibly November or December to get the ball rolling on that. Because we'd like to do about four sessions and have those completed before our budget sessions begin in April, so we can get the ball rolling on where we, where we want to see the future of our city. Last two items, the Westland Chamber of Commerce asked me to pass this on. I'd be happy to. In partnership with Wayne County, the Westland Chamber of Commerce is distributing free personal protection equipment kits to Westland businesses. These kits include face masks, hand sanitizer, and gloves. If you'd like more information, you can go to westlandchamber.com and complete an online registration form. Someone from the Westland Chamber will contact you about picking up your free PPE kits at the Westland Chamber of Commerce. Kits are limited to one kit per business. With that said, have a great evening. Good seeing everybody, and we'll see you in a couple weeks.
Thank you, Councilman Londo. I'd like to begin tonight by thanking Councilman McDermott for leading us in our back-in-person first pledge of allegiance. So that was monumentous, if nothing else. I appreciated it. So thank you so much. Got the ball rolling. Congratulations again to the mayor. A couple others said it as well. Congratulations to your recent election to the president of the MML. So I think that's to the president of the MML. So I think that'll, again, to add to your body of work, and you'll have an awful lot to lend to that organization as well. So, very well. I want to thank a couple people really quick, in no uncertain order. Vic Barra, Kyle, our Parks and Recreation Director, Craig Brown, IT and Cable, of course, Craig, welcome back. IT and Cable, just like my colleague had said earlier, they have worked tirelessly to make sure that our remote meetings really went off very well. My colleague, Councilman Londo, has stated that a couple other cities weren't as professional as ours. They weren't as well-run. They're just really clunky with the technology. I really think that we had a very short window to come up with something that was very effective. And I, I thank Craig for all the work you did on, on making those work as well as they did, especially when I had a meeting that I was a little frustrated, then I go watch another one. And man, I felt an awful lot better about what we did. So thank you. In no part, that's, that's all you. So thank you so much from the entire council. For those of us that are with us tonight, where you're sitting about a month ago was about three inches underwater. If you don't know, we had a waterline burst over the Labor Day weekend, and Vic Barra came in on the weekend to check up on something real quick, and his feet started splish-splashing all over the place, all the way back in the other area. He had to literally put this whole council chamber back together again. We had blowers, dryers, holes in the wall. We had Balfour out here doing emergency restoration, and we were really nervous. And it damaged some wiring and everything else. Electurn got damaged. I mean, it flooded in here. Everybody worked amazingly quickly because I told them that I want to be back in person October 5th. So I, I gave them a deadline. And I, well, I told them September, but then I had to stretch it a little bit. So they asked for a little bit of a reprieve, so I gave them two weeks, and, and they made it. I even met with Craig today. I goes, Craig, are you sure we're going to be good? He goes, we're going to be just fine. So, and when he tells me that, I trust him, and everything's worked just fine. So Craig, thank you to you and your team. And again, Vic, if you're watching this, and I'll catch you in the halls, I know I've told you a few times, thank you for everything you do. And Kyle and all the other team, couple members from the administration were out here putting these chairs up, setting these stickers down, working to the last minute to make sure that we could do this in person. So bottom of my heart, Mayor, thank you to your entire team and the administration for working so hard to put this together for us, because I'm glad we're back in person. Wanted to, just like everybody else, thank and applaud the clerk for his recent grant award. That is huge. That is huge. So I will give you a COVID-safe fist bump right here through the glass. So very good.
It's my first one.
There you go. It's a first for everything. I want to thank my colleagues for being here today, and of course, you always do a good job of bringing a lot of positive information. You guys are always dialed into a couple different things, and you share all those things here for the residents. So I think it's fantastic. And you leave me with absolutely nothing than just to applaud you for all you do. So thank you for coming out and sharing everything you do. Again, you get, you get me up here mumbling on a couple other things because you really took everything out of the tank, and I got nothing left. So, but not today. Couple other things. The dog park, Councilman Hersberg, thank God you backed off on that because I wasn't a fan to begin with. So I'm glad that you retracted that because I'm, because we have a dog park right around the corner in Heinz Drive. So if you don't know, we do have a dog park right in Heinz Drive there. It's a county dog park. It's actually pretty good. We take our dog there. She's registered. You have to register here. She has to, your, your pet has to be registered here. You have to have your rabies and your, your city license. You take that over to Nankin Mills, and then they, they give you a passcode. And it's really a digital code, a unique digital code. You, you go right up to it, you push your code, and the gate opens. So you can play with your dog, and they give you a little ID and everything. So it's actually pretty intuitive, and it's close. So if you want a dog park that's nearby, we have one. You just go on Merriman and head west, and it's, it's right there. As soon as you get off on the exit. It's actually pretty good. Recycling. Mayor, thank you for kind of bringing up some information. I know I was getting calls. I'm sure all my colleagues were really curious about kind of how the recycling is going. Please, people at home, if you didn't hear the numbers the mayor told you, it is extremely, extremely expensive to recycle, and it is three times worse if it's a contaminated load. We can honestly probably carry five garbage trucks full of regular trash for the price of one contaminated recycle truck. So think about that for a minute. So we're going to be putting out the materials. We're putting out the information. Please read it. But until then, if you're not sure, I'm going to ask you one thing. When in doubt, throw it out. Okay? If you're not sure that that's recyclable, you put it in the black can. We'll deal with it later. Okay? But right now, we have to get this straightened out. Otherwise, it's, it's going to have detrimental effects unto our sanitation millage that we, you all just asked for in the past. But if it runs out of gas in the tank, even out of that millage, we're going to have big problems. So we're going to work together. The administration's working together to try and figure out how we can educate you, and maybe we all work together to educate our neighbors. So your neighbor to your left, neighbor to your right, I'm not telling you to be the recycle Gestapo, but maybe just talk to them and say, hey, did you know a can it can't go in your can? So talk to your neighbors. That's what you guys are, you're here for. You're active. You're watching this meeting, so that means you're civically minded. So talk to your neighbors and try and get them on the same page, because it's all our budget. Last thing, I think, maybe not. Councilman Hersberg is absolutely correct about hush. If you haven't been there, you're going to see craftsmanship that I've never seen. And I had the pleasure, actually, I've worked with the owner over there to help him develop his IT and his camera system. You get a chance. I saw from an empty, empty building into what it is now, and I'm watching those craftsmen and craftswomen work. I have never seen something so impressive. And they change it up every year. They, they probably change about 30, 40% of it, if not more. It is completely, completely amazing. Just go in there. If you, if you like haunted houses, and you don't have too much of a hard condition, definitely go in there. They're some of the best in the business, and it's a Westland business. And Cody and his team, they put a lot of effort into our city, and man, it's, it's worth a trip. And the last thing I'll say is, Mr. Pruitt, I will tell you one thing. I have never seen a kid that quiet that long. Had it been my kids in here, it would have been mess and noise from step one. So I don't know what you've done to them. I don't know what kind of counseling. I'm not going to ask. But I mean, if it's legal, publish a book, because you'll be able to sell it. So I'm, I'm totally impressed with, not a peep out of that child I have heard. And we've, he's been here since about 5:30. So I'm impressed. With that, I thank you all for coming. Thank you for coming back and seeing us all in person. I think we're moving forward or moving, you know, we're, we're back, trying to get back to normal as much as normal can be. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Good evening.